Do we have any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, I'll carry on. Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And as all those that remember, and it's on the agenda that I am presenting, a notice of motion to county council today. But in the original, when I stood up and talked about that notice of motion, I talked about the Gray County Federation of Ag also coming to speak to that notice of motion. So they are after, on the agenda to come later, or after the notice of motion. So I was asking, and I'm going to ask, if county council will allow the change on the agenda to allow the delegation to speak first. And I have a little bit here to read that the committee of whole agenda be amended to permit the Gray County Federation of Ag delegation to present ahead of the notice of motion regarding the farm tax decreases under business arising. And so I need two-thirds majority for that. I don't know if I need a motion for that.
You're moving. And so do you mind, Counselor Desai? And we'll put a two vote. We do need two-thirds. Does everybody understand the proposal? Are you voting, or you had a question?
I thought you called a vote.
Okay. I'm ready to call the vote then. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. So we will proceed with our delegation. Item number four, Hugh Simpson and Mike Ryan from the Gray County Federation of Agriculture.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us today and listening to us again this year. So Mike and I, my name is Hugh Simpson, 2003 County Federation of Agriculture. And Mike Ryan is the past president, and we've also got Ben Laporte here, who's a support role for us from the Ontario Federation of Agriculture. I just wanted to make maybe a couple minutes of opening comments. And much of this you'll know already, but so the Gray County Federation of Agriculture represents about 1,550 farm members across Gray County. There's about 3,500 farm families in Gray County. The farm sector generates about $400 million in GDP in Gray County. That somehow gets spent in our local and surrounding economies. Some other interesting facts about, that I discovered as I was opening this file, is that Gray County is unique in a couple ways across Ontario. One is there are more owner farmers in Gray County than there are elsewhere in Ontario. Many farms are farmed by those who do custom farming or who rent the land. We have a preponderance of farmers who own the land that they farm. The other thing that is unique, and I think quite promising, in Gray County, which has a higher average than the rest of Ontario, is we have more young farmers. There are more young farmers trending, taking over farms or buying farms and coming to Gray County to farm than there are, on average, elsewhere in counties across Ontario. I tell you all that because I think it is a, those are positive for Gray County, and I think it kind of positions agriculture as a really strategic sector for the county. At Gray County Federation, we've taken on three priorities as it regards advocacy for farms. One is rural economic development. We're not here to talk about that today, but we may someday again. The other is environmental stewardship. That's a file that is not well-understood by many, and there are opposing views and different corners of that. And we have a strong role to play in that file, and we do play a long role. So we'll talk about that some other day. And what we're here to talk about today is the farm property tax file. This is, those are the three things that have come up with our members as kind of top priorities. So as the year goes along, we'll come back and talk to you about all of those things that you'll have us, but today's the farm property tax file. We also understand that on this file, it's not necessarily well-understood by all, and that, and for those who have studied it, they, in some cases, have taken a position. And so what we've tried to do today, and Mike is going to speak to this, is come forward with some ideas that would allow council and individual members of council to go back to their constituents, whether they are farm constituents or non-farm constituents, with a message that is balanced, that says, we've considered the interests of the county, the economics of the county. We've also considered the interests of a really strong farm stakeholder group, as well as the non-farm stakeholder group. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Mike to speak specifically to the farm property tax file that we've got a proposal for. So thanks.
Thanks, Hugh, and thanks, Mr. Warden, for having us here today. I don't know if, when I was in high school, I thought I would be here four times in two years talking about taxes, but here I am. So the Federation across Ontario has been advocating this for the last four years since MPAC came out with their latest rounds of assessment. And there was a drastic increase in farmland value across the province that did not correlate with the residential user. So in Gray County as a whole, agricultural farms or agricultural property class went up by 71%. Southgate and West Gray saw rates that were quite significantly higher. We had a member of our board that went to Northern Ontario and sold his properties. But one of the reasons that he cited was the fact that his properties had doubled in value, and his taxes were going to go from $5,000 a year to $10,000 a year over four years. One important thing to note is that we're not asking that agriculture property taxes pay less than they did last year. What we're asking is for reasonable increases. Not many businesses can afford a 71% increase in their taxes, on average, some of them doubling in the south of the county. The problem is, is that residential rates only increased by 5%. So over, over the last 20 years, since 2001, as MPAC has reassessed properties across the county, farmers have paid between 2% and 3% of the entire county budget. The problem with this last assessment is that farmland has increased and residential increases haven't kept pace. And so we've seen a shift in burden on the tax dollar towards agriculture property and away from the residential rate payer. In the first year of this phase in, farmers across Gray County, on average, saw an 18% increase in their taxes in one year. The next year, last year, we saw a 12.5% increase. And this coming year, we'll see another 12.5% increase, plus or minus how different municipal budgets phase through. What this means to the residential rate payer is actually a decrease in taxes. So last year, council asked Mr. Webler to come forward with a report looking at if the farm property tax class was dropped to .22 of the residential rate. And what it worked out to, the average home in Gray County, keeping at a .25, would have saw an $8 decrease in their tax bill coming from the county. And our proposal would have seen them not receive that decrease, but had no corresponding increase to the residential rate payer. As I said, over the past 20 years, we've seen agricultural taxpayers pay between 2% and 3% of the county budget. Where was I going with that? But with this latest increase, we're not going to see a massive rate of increased services to rural agricultural land. And being agriculture as a main driver in the county, what we're asking, I know where I was going with this, is that as we see this rate increase to the agricultural land, our proposal, as I said, is not for agricultural land to pay less taxes, but to split the difference. That instead of seeing a 71% increase in taxes, what we're asking for and our goal is that we meet somewhere in the middle at about 3.5, which is still significantly higher than agricultural land has traditionally paid to the county budget. And what we're trying to do is have a moderate tax increase to help businesses in Gray County To the residential rate payers, it means a drop from 85% of the county budget down to 84%. So again, we're trying to reiterate that this isn't an increase to the residential rate payer. They will still see a decrease, but they won't receive the whole decrease that they would have received due to the change in assessment. That's what I've just discussed. So what the Federation did was run these numbers to try and keep the county budget dollars coming from agricultural land to 3.5%. And to change the tax ratio from .25 of the residential rate down to .224 would keep agricultural land in Gray County paying about 3.5% of the entire county budget. The first time I came here, there were five counties across Ontario that had dropped their tax rate below .25. Last year, when I came, Oxford County and Lampton County, I believe, dropped it last year. This year, I come forward, and Dufferin County last week just dropped their agricultural tax rate to .23, I believe. With that, I would take any questions.
Very good. Questions?
There was one, one quick thing I wanted to add, and Ben Laporte from the OFA, familiar to returning council members, been here the last couple years as well, and just wanted to quickly add that to really kind of assess the situation, I think what probably would be best for council to have all the information, the part of the problem is, is these assessments are phased in over a four-year period, and we're in the third year of that. So each year now, the increases build on the year before. So for council to have full information, I think what would be best would be if there was a report that showed, basically at the beginning of this assessment cycle in 2016, how much tax was each property class paying? Farm, residential, commercial, industrial, pipeline, et cetera, in 2016. How did that increase in 2017? How did that increase in 2018? And what you will find from that is actually that, as Mike said, yeah, in the first year, farm taxes went up nearly 19% in one year. In 2017, or in 2018, they went up near 13% on top of that last year. And at the same time, residential taxes actually decreased. And while, so you're able to decrease residential taxes while increasing your budget, and that was paid for entirely by shifting on to one very small property class in the county. So if you looked at the taxes in 2016, 2017, 2018, and then projected out for 2019 based under different scenarios, right? The first scenario would be your status quo. What would farmers pay, what would residential and commercial pay in 2019 if you had kept it at .25? You would see another significant increase in farmland, to spoil the report. And then if you were to compare that to, what would each property class be paying if farm tax ratio is at .24, .23, .224, which is a specific request here? And from there, you'll be able to see, over this assessment period, even if you reduce it down to 224, how much more is each property class paying compared to last year? And even more importantly, because this is a four-year cycle, how much is each property class paying more in relation to 2016, the base year? And what you will find is, even if you reduce the ratio, farm property class will be essentially the only property class, a major property class in terms of your proportion of taxes, that would be paying more in 2019 than they paid in 2016 as a proportion of your budget, even with a ratio of .224. So I, I think that would be probably the most constructive way to look at this, is looking at the last few years and then looking at the different scenarios for this year, and making a decision based off the data that comes from that. So that would be, I think, the best way, in my view. But again, we're very happy to open up the questions and comments on that specific path or anything else.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you very much for your presentation today. I guess a couple of questions. During the time of the 71% for the agricultural lands, what was the, and maybe this is a question for Kevin, what was that same increase for residential during that same time?
Your treasurer can confirm it, but over this assessment cycle, 5% for residential.
Okay, that's one question. Okay, interesting. The other question is, is you had on your chart somewhere around 3.5% to try to find that balance. I know last year, there was an email sent out with sort of showing of what that ratio would be if the residential was at zero, didn't go down. And I thought, Kevin, that was somewhere just under .24. And I don't know if you have that, .23, whatever it was, and maybe that could be researched. And because I think, just saying, I think we probably all agree that we see farm assessments gone up, but is it, would we all agree that a residential shouldn't go down? I guess that's sort of some of your discussion maybe also. I don't know. I just asked that question to you guys.
Yeah, so certainly, the issue really is, is it, and I think when you look at the numbers from 2016, 2017, 2018, model out 2019, I think the only conclusion to come to is it's a tax fairness issue. Essentially, you know, can we, is it fair to be increasing one property class by 13 to nearly 20% per year while giving another property tax of reduction in taxes? That's at the heart of our request, and I should amend, I forgot to update this particular slide, so apologies. So really, in 2018, we've already moved up past 3.5 to 4% of the budget. And that's what I mean when I said that the impacts were cumulative year over year. So the, yeah, as we see here in 2018, it's already moved up to 4% of the budget from farm tax. This request of the ratio at the end of .224, we'd keep that at 4%, which is more than you've ever collected from farm property. So in this scenario, farm property taxes would still increase. They would simply increase at least for one year at a similar rate to other properties, and try to avoid this situation where we have approximately 15% year-over-year increase in property taxes, because obviously, as everyone can deduct over around this room, that a 15% per year increase is not sustainable for very long. So really, the request, I think, is a very reasonable one, is to, after a pretty historic run-up in property tax increase over the last several years, to slow that increase, not get rid of it, taxes will still go up, but just to slow it to something reasonable for one year, reassess how things look in 2020, which is the last year of the assessment cycle. And in 2021, we'll have a new MPAC assessments report, and I hope very much that the assessments are more, you know, equitable or closer in terms of the changes between farm, residential, commercial, because that would kind of address the issue going forward. But we'll have to kind of cross that bridge once MPAC is ready to deliver their report. But again, just, it really comes down to the fairness issue. Can we be reducing taxes on others while increasing at 15% a year on the others? And if so, why do we think that's appropriate?
Okay. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One of the statistics that was brought forward was that the last MPAC review, farmland in Gray County was expected to, was increasing 71% over four years. I've got two questions, one mainly around that statistic. Do we know why MPAC has, is valuing farmland at that high rate?
So once every...
One second. Kevin, anything to add to that?
MPAC works at sales from front to front, and that's always based on true sales values, based on back in 2016.
Sorry, you had something to add to that question?
I was just going to reiterate that.
Okay.
And the important thing to note is that farm properties with a house, that one acre in the house is valued separately than agricultural land, and we're, so farmers are paying full residential rate on that one acre and the house, yeah.
Counselor Desai?
Thank you. One of the things that we hear a lot is that farmers feed cities. And a while ago, the farm tax credit was downloaded to municipalities, and my question through you to Gray County Federation of Agriculture is that do they lobby the provincial government to have that uploaded back to the provincial level? Because I definitely agree that farms feed cities, but at the same time, having the farm tax credit be a municipal program adds an additional burden to rural communities that communities, urban communities, don't really have to face. So does the GCFA lobby the provincial government on that?
So as a provincial issue, and the OFA president of, I can say, actually, yesterday, I was with the president of the Treasury Board, meeting on a number of issues, one of which was, we brought three issues forward, and they're the three issues we've been hammering: natural gas for rural Ontario, broadband for rural Ontario, funding for rural municipalities. So certainly, the issue I think that you're referring to is, back in 98, we had the farm tax rebate program. Province, while that was one of many changes, changed basically the entire property tax system, changed what municipalities were responsible for delivering, what the province was responsible for delivering. Many years later, several years later, they reduced the funding through the OMPF. So they kind of went back on their original agreement that this funding was going to help rural municipalities. I can tell you personally, I've been in dozens of meetings with staff from municipalities across Ontario, Eastern Ontario, Northern Ontario, Western Ontario, at Roma, at AMO, working on different policy proposals to bring municipal funding forward to the province to reinstate better funding through the OMPF, et cetera. You know, it's been a long slog. There's been here and there rural infrastructure programs that kind of nibble at the situation. But that has been OFA's number one priority for a few years, is producing prosperity, which funding for rural infrastructure, roads and bridges particularly, is one of the pillars of that. And I know that the province will be reviewing the OMPF this year. That, I think, is a cause for concern, really, because although we want to push for it to be increased, the way that the current government wants to balance this budget, and they've identified transfer payments, which the OMPF is, is one of the things that they would like to cut, I think this is something that we need to work together, sadly, just to hold on to what we have right now with that, but also to push for additional funding through the OMPF and other, you know, whether it be the OMPF or be, you know, extra additional dollars targeted at rural municipalities, like actually rural ones too, not, the current formula is funnel a lot of the rural money to towns under 100,000, and the towns that get that are the ones that have 99,000. So that's one of the things we brought forward to the province, is town of 99,000 isn't exactly what we mean by rural, when we need extra funding there. So those are the kind of things that we have, and I personally have, and the OFA board has, worked to lobby for, and I think we need to continue to work on that even more to have a chance to get that message through. So thank you for that question.
Okay. Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm shocked to hear that any provincial government would go back on their word. Not standing that, good presentation, gentlemen. My question is, you talked about, you know, the ebb and flow of the different tax rates. If we were to consider something of this nature, would there be impacts, and what level of impact to other tax classes? Because there's quite a myriad of different tax classes, some bigger, some smaller.
Yeah, so that was why I suggested, exactly right. So council should know what the impacts are. It's a zero-sum game, right? You need to collect what you need to collect. All this is determining is who you're getting it from. So a decision to keep it at .25 is a decision to take even more of it than you have, as you've shown in this graph, from one property class. A decision to reduce that would be to say, we're going to distribute this increase amongst everybody. So what I recommended, I think, would be the best way for council to look at this, is say, again, at the beginning of this assessment cycle in 2016, what did each property class pay? 2017, the first year MPAC phased this in, what did each property class pay? 2018, what did each property class pay? And now in 2019, what will each property class pay if you keep it, the ratio the same? Or if you reduce it to .24, to .23, to .224? And looking at those various scenarios, so that you can see the impact year over year. So that if you reduce it to .224, you know, this is what it means to residential. They paid X in 2018. If we reduce it, this is what they'll pay in 2019. And I think what you'll find is that it's not a very scary number.
Okay. Our CAO has a comment or question?
Thanks, and thanks for your presentation, gentlemen. My question is whether or not the OFA has, do you know where an optimum number is at the end of all of this? I appreciate you saying, you know, for this year, you'd like to, you know, kind of hold the line. Last year, Oxford reduced theirs from 25 to 23.5, and this year, you're asking them to lower it again to 22. Is that what we can expect here as well? Is there a place that you're trying to get to?
I think it's more of a place we're trying to avoid. So if I go back to this graph here, 2018, we already had the record high, right? So I think that the situation that we're trying to avoid is setting a new record in terms of the amount of property taxes coming from farms each year over this assessment cycle. And even with the reduced ratio, they'll still pay more in dollars than they did last year, but it's more about getting to the top of this graph, at near 5% of the budget, where it used to be hovering between 2, 2.5, which would essentially be a doubling of the tax burden. So there's not a specific number that says farmers only pay 3%. It's more, they've been taking it on the chin for several years in a row, a nearly 20% increase. On top of that, a 13% increase, we'd be looking at similar over the next two years. Really, the ask is, let's slow that increase down to something at least in the single digits of tax increase year over year. And then in 2020, hopefully, and nobody hopes more than me, that residential, commercial, industrial values increase either more than farmland or at a similar rate, at which point this issue, you'll not see me talking about this if that's the case. But we kind of just are at a point now where we're trying to hold on over the next two years of this cycle, given the disparity in the assessments, and then see what the land looks like once MPAC releases their new assessment cycle.
Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So one of the things, and I might be jumping ahead on the agenda a little bit, so if this question is out of order, do let me know. One of the things that I'm hearing from this presentation is that they're looking at keeping the proportion of farm, of tax collected from farm properties at around 4%. My question through you to possibly staff is, is that the future of municipal taxation, where we decide that what each, the proportion of taxes we collect from each class of property? And is that something that's coming in the, in the report on April 11?
I'll ask Kevin.
Yeah, and the tax policy is brought to council, and those are the discussions that take place. They are, there is, by regulation, though, there is limits what you can do with ratios, et cetera. So you can't just say, you know, if assessment values were dropping in a certain class, that I can just raise that class. Now, there is prescribed regulations saying what ratios can be. So there is limits. In the farm tax, we can lower that, but there's others that you couldn't raise then to offset so much, right? Like residential is set at 1. You can't, you can't do anything with that, for example. So, yeah, it's part of the annual tax policy, and it should be the thought process of what are we trying to accomplish in those policy decisions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the...
Question for Kevin.
Counselor Suella?
Yes, so it's my understanding that county sets the tax ratios for all the municipalities as well. Is that correct?
I'll accept On Sound.
Oh, okay.
And let me qualify that, is the county apportions its budget based on its ratios. The city of On Sound takes that requisition of amount, and they, they have their own ratios, and they, and that was part of when the city of On Sound joined the county, was their ratios were drastically different, and it would make a huge impact to the residential rate payers. And it was a provision that the province gave that the city would work towards getting their ratios closer to the counties.
Yes, and so does that mean that if we adjust the ratios here, the local municipalities and their local taxation will also be affected?
If we change ratios here at the county, what is requisition could change by municipalities, depending on where the proportion of the assessments lie. So if on one municipality, for example, on the farm was to be lowered, most of this would shift back to the residential. There's some municipalities would have a significant more residential assessment than other municipalities in the county, and they would see shifts to those municipalities and to those, to those residential properties.
So they would, they would have to adjust their mill rate to make up for the lost revenue?
Your budget would be the budget, and you would just be revenue neutral, getting your budget, but just those properties would be paying more tax of the local than other property classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've, thank you very much for your presentation. Good discussion. I think this is a nice transition to, are we going back to item 3A now, Madam Clerk? Clerk?
Yes.
Notice a motion. And so I'll look for a mover to put it on the table. You have a question prior, or you're moving?
No, no.
Okay. Moved by Counselor McQueen, seconded by Counselor Desai. Sorry. All those in, oh, sorry, we're not ready to vote yet. My goodness. Really moving things along, aren't I? Okay, Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks for the opportunity for County Council to have this as a discussion point this morning. I guess a few things. Just going back to the ask from our presenters today is, I think that would be very helpful, I think, for County Council to see if our finance staff could come back with what that would look like from .24, .23, and .22. And I'm just thinking a little further from the pair of the mountains, that maybe it could also show that information to each municipality, what that would look like. And I think that's very helpful. I know, Kevin, in the past, through our local treasury, you've provided that information, which has been very helpful.
And certainly, on this notice of motion, I've put from .25 to .24. Part of the reason was is to bring on some discussion, and the opportunity to look at, is there an opportunity for us to reduce that rate? I think it's interesting to note that, maybe any clarity from our treasurer, that of all the classes, the farm tax ratio class has provisions that we can change that ratio.
I guess my question is, is why was that put in there?
Must have been a reason maybe why, I'm not sure. But obviously, it was put in there for a reason, and maybe the reasons are, is what we're experiencing through the last, this last four-year phase-in period. I mean, you look at the agricultural industry, and we all hear the news and watch what's going on up there, is, just more recently, well, I would say this, is farmers certainly take, certainly a big risk on their business that they're doing every day, day in and day out. I mean, just as a sense of the, of Just mentioned that Gray County is one of the, I guess, leaders of, in the province, that more young farmers are taking over. But you know, for young farmers taking over that agricultural operation, we know that the cost of farms and equipment and everything keeps going up, just as, I guess, the April 1st, you know, the carbon taxes coming out that's going to increase costs across the board. From the agricultural side, just look at what's happening with, right now with canola, what's happening there. Imagine if you're a canola grower, and also you can't sell your product. We've seen cattle prices have been slipping since 2014. We've all witnessed last fall, the weather, early winter weather, that caught a lot of soybean and corn farmers off guard. And I just saw a field of canola this week that was combined since it was sitting out all winter. Fortunately, was able to get some of that product off. So I guess, in a sense, Mr. Warden and County Council, I guess I'm asking maybe two options here. Could this motion of what I'm putting on here be deferred, for the example of a report to come back from the Treasury to our next County Council, so we can get more information? I mean, part of our decision-makers around the table is, we can't argue that if more information is needed, that's a good thing. So I would ask maybe this motion that's on here be deferred, with the opportunity to have a report come back from our Treasury with regards to the ask that the Federation has asked for us today to look at that, .24, .23, and .224, along with what that would shake down to our lower municipalities too. I guess I motion that to defer, I guess.
I'll ask Kevin to respond in just a second, but my understanding of the motion as it reads right now, is that simply that the option be included in the report to come to council. So, given that, I don't see a need really to defer, because you're simply requesting that Kevin consider that option. Kevin?
That was exactly my comment.
Well, maybe I need to amend the motion that is here to include .24, .23, and .224 in a report, in that report. Does that need to be amended to show those? So I would move that amendment then?
We can model that. That's, I don't, it's just consideration. We can show what that looks like.
Okay. I'm hearing there's no need to amend the motion. Staff will include that. Counselor Boddy?
I was just going to point out the same thing as just pointed out. The motion is to consider, we're going to get a report on April 11th. Is that the date I heard?
Right.
Tax policy that comes annually for some of the new councils around here, that's a, sometimes you have to read it twice. It's written by an accountant. So, you know, every time you push someplace in the balloon, it pops out somewhere else. Tax policy is one of those things that is more complicated than it seems, and I'm supporting getting that report back, or part of the report on April 11th. So I don't think you need to defer your motion that's here, because you're basically just asking to consider it.
Maybe, Mr. Warden, if it was deferred, or if it was amended just to say, to give us options under .25%, so then you could have all those options that
Yeah, I think Kevin has got the flavor. And, sorry.
What needs to be in the motion to make that? So then there's direction. I know we have to give direction back, and so, under .25, and then it gives the balance of whatever he brings back. Is that, does that, I should call it a friendly amendment, or?
Under 25, okay. From 25 to under 25. Okay, everybody gets that? Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I fully support the direction that I think we're going. But I will remind County Council that in 2017, the local agrofoos strategic plan was adopted, and one of the actions in that strategic plan provided targeted support to strengthen Gray County's ag sector. And I think that's very important. And if we're not going to support one of the main pillars of the economy in this county, then there's something wrong. I think we need to support the ag community, and this is a very targeted way to do that. So I look forward to the report, Mr. Warden.
Okay. And Counselor Boddy, you were talking about clarity. I guess the report would be far more clear if written by lawyers.
Worse.
All right, I think we're ready to call the question. Is there any other discussion to be had? So I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Good discussion. And we're moving on. So are we ready yet for item number five? Our visitor is not here as yet.
Eleven.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, determining items that may require separate discussion. You all have the list in front of you, looking at 7A through D. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? If not, then I will look for a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Clumpus. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Items for direction and discussion. First of all, item 8A. Randy, you're on, and we're dealing with the development charges deferral requests. I've got a mover to put this item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Boddy, and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. And Randy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. So the purpose of this report is to provide an overview of two development charge deferral requests that the county has received, and to also discuss potential changes to development charges by law to encourage more affordable housing. So the county has received two development charge deferral requests for two new developments within the city of On Sound. The first deferral request is from Sound Lifestyles Limited. It's a proposed development called the Ninth Avenue Estates. And the second deferral request is from Berry's Construction for the Strathcona Apartments. Both are requesting that development charges be deferred until the first occupancy permit has been issued by the city. So what that means is, normally, we collect development charges at time of building permit. They're requesting that development charges be paid at time of occupancy permit. By deferring development charges until occupancy, it reduces the developer's upfront costs on the development, and defers them until time of occupancy, when they would be starting to collect revenue from the development itself. The Development Charge Act allows a municipality to enter into a deferral agreement. So just an overview of the two proposed developments. The first deferral request, as I mentioned, is from Sound Lifestyles Limited. They're proposing to create a total of 19 life-lease townhouse units, designed exclusively for the over 55 age group. The lands are located west of Ninth Avenue East, and you can see them there on the screen. It are directly south of the Notre Dame School, and east of St. Dominic Catholic School in On Sound. The development will be fully accessible, and the units will range from 345,000 to 365,000 per unit. Although these units are outside of what we consider the affordable range, they may be attainable by some, and what we, what it will provide is senior housing that is fully accessible, which we heard through Recolor Gray is something that's definitely needed in this area. There's another image of what the units will look like at, once they're developed. The next, the second deferral request is from Berry's Construction, who is proposing to create a total of 68 apartment rental units, with 11 of the apartments being accessible. The apartments are being created by converting a former school known as Strathcona in the city of On Sound. The lands are, as you can see on the screen, highlighted in blue there. They are located east of Fourth Avenue East, north of 10th Street East, and they're adjacent to the Julie MacArthur Rec Center, which is located just up the hill, and you can see it there on the screen on the right-hand side. The units will range in price from $900 to $1,150 per month, and the proposed development would help to address a significant apartment shortage that we're experiencing throughout Gray County. There's another image of what the apartments will look like once the construction is completed. So, based on these requests, council could defer the payment of development charges, or take no action, and require that development charges be paid at time of building permit, which is when they're normally paid. The county has received one deferral request in the past. At that time, council did approve that deferral request. That was for another development in the city of On Sound called the Potawatomi Gardens, which redeveloped a former medical clinic into life-lease apartments on Alpha Street. Some of you may be familiar with that proposal. At the time, they were estimated, for those units, was $200,000 per unit, and that was back in 2015. So based on these two developments supporting both the need for accessible seniors housing, and the second one being purpose-built rental housing, it's recommended that the deferral request be supported, and that staff be directed to complete deferral agreements with the two developers, which would defer collection of the county development charges until issuance of an occupancy permit for the first unit. Should the council decide to defer the development charges, as I mentioned, the development charges will be eventually collected. It just would be deferred until time of occupancy. There would be an annual inflationary index that would be applied to those development charges. So whenever those, the first occupancy permit would be issued, there would be annual indexing of inflationary rates applied to that charge as well. For the Ninth Avenue Estates, the current county development charge per unit would be just under $5,000. Total of $94,183 for 19 units. For the Strathcona Apartments development, an apartment unit is just over $4,200 per unit. Total of $286,000 for 68 apartments, approximately, is what the current development charge would be. So that's the two deferral requests. There is another part of this report, but I'm wondering if there's, maybe take a pause if there's any questions specifically with the two deferral requests.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Suaver?
Yes, you know, I think these deferrals are a good way to promote the right kind of development. I would have a question, though. On the first project, it talks about a price of 345 to 365 in terms of it being a life lease. But life lease in condo-type projects also have monthly fees associated. So I'm wondering, when we look at these things, and this gets probably to the second part of the report, but, you know, if we do these on a one-off, I would prefer that we have a policy, because it's not clear to me, like, at 365, if there's a monthly fee of, say, $500, I don't know what it is, it's probably not that high, but, just to throw a number out there, that's not really attainable anymore. So, you know, I don't mind deferring fees for attainable, or accessible, or rental, but, you know, I think we should have a policy. Otherwise, if we don't have a policy, everybody who comes, if I'm a developer, I'm going to come every time and say, I want a deferral. This guy got one, and my units are, you know, same price. So I'd just like to know what is the fee there, so we can better assess whether that really is attainable. And also, you know, the second part of the report, I guess, deals with the other part of my question.
It sounds like the second part of the report is dealing with the first question as well, is it not?
It's a bit of both, yes. But at this point in time, I don't know what that monthly fee would be. I don't know if the developer knows exactly when that would, what that fee would be either, because until the development's built, you know, obviously, there'd be common areas that they would all be paying for in terms of the access roads and things of that nature. So, and obviously, they're leasing those units as opposed to owning those units. So there would no doubt be a fee, but I don't know what that monthly fee is currently. There is, the second part of that is, is what we're recommending would be to develop a policy, and bring that forward to council for any future deferral requests, to see what criteria council wants to consider when we're considering these deferral requests. So that's part of the second part of this report.
Kim?
That was going to be my point as well, is that we did have that conversation about this particular request, and looked more at the fact that they're building fully accessible units, and there's some additional costs that come with building to a fully accessible standard. And so that was really what kind of underpinned the rationale for letting this come in front of you. But I totally agree, we need to be, have some consistent rules that people can look at, so they know.
Absolutely. And one of them could be the criteria of if they're building fully accessible units, and maybe that's something where we would consider deferrals. And I totally agree that developing a policy that sets out that criteria totally makes sense.
Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Got, well, two very related questions. So if County Council does go ahead today and say that we will grant the deferral, does this open doors to developers working in other municipalities to come to staff and say, we would also like a deferral? I mean, there is, I know there's developers working in other municipalities in Gray County. Can they come in? What would be the threshold? If there's a developer that's building five homes on a private well, can that developer come to council and say, or to staff and say, I'd like a deferral on my development charges? My second question is, do we know if the city of On Sound is deferring their portion of the development charges, or is this just the county that's deferring?
So on the first question, I think you are transitioning us to part two of the report, but I'll let you answer, Randy.
Yeah, so, yeah, definitely the first part, or first question is related to the second part of the report. One of our recommendations in that second part of the report is, is to bring back a policy that would set out those thresholds. The second question, based on the last update that we've had from city staff, they haven't, they hadn't received a request from the developers, but that could be very well that the developers approach the city and also request something similar. They're all, for the Strathcona apartment ones, because there's an existing building, they were assessing whether or not there would be a credit applied based on the redevelopment of that. So that's something that the city is still determining.
Counselor Desai, it seems to me that this is something that all the lower tiers are going to be wrestling with in the next short time. Further question?
Yes. There will be a gap between when the policy, between today, when we're giving direction to, for staff to come back with a policy, and when a policy does come back and it's enacted. My question is, in that period of time between today and when the policy comes before council, can other developers and other lower tiers come and make that request? And on what basis would staff either approve or deny or bring it forward to council?
Okay, so this is a good time to transition to the second part of your
Yeah, absolutely. So, and I'll focus in on the one recommendation that, which is creating a development charge deferral policy. So that way, we're not dealing with one-off requests. But Counselor Desai is absolutely correct in that there would be a gap between now and that policy, when we bring it up forward. For that, we would just, you know, anyone can make a request, of course, to council to consider deferrals, just like these two developers had just like these two developers have, have come forward. We would deal with those until that policy is in place and bring forward a similar report of whether or not we would recommend or not recommend deferrals. For these two deferral requests, as, as Kim indicated, we're recommending the, the one be deferred based on it being fully accessible, and the other one is because of purpose-built rental housing. Both of those are addressing two needs that we heard time and time again through our Recolor Gray consultations and discussion with the community. There's a need for both fully accessible senior housing as well as purpose-built rental housing. And that's why we're recommending that, that there be the support for deferral requests on this, on those bases.
Counselor Desai?
Can I speak to the slides that's up there right now, or?
Does it make sense that he speak to it or, or that Randy do his presentation?
I, I can go through it and then, and then, yeah, hope, maybe there, I may be able to answer some questions. And if not, then of course, take any further questions. So I'll go back one slide. There's an ongoing need, as I mentioned, for, for more affordable housing throughout Gray County. And more importantly, what we've heard is purpose-built rental housing and secondary units. As I mentioned, through Recolor Gray, we've heard this time and time again, as well as other conversations and other tables that, that county staff sit on through Health and Community Partnership Table and other tables, the need for more rental housing and secondary units is, is growing. The current vacancy rate for rental housing is quite low throughout the county. According to CMHC, the current average vacancy rate for On Sound, Miford, and West Gray, which is the only three municipalities they report data on, in two thousand and eighteen was between one point one percent to two point five percent. The average vacancy rate in Ontario was one point eight percent in two thousand and eighteen. So it's not a unique situation that there, we've, and we've heard, hear this time again, that there's a need throughout the province for more rental housing. A healthy housing market vacancy rate is between three to four percent, just to give you an idea in terms of where we would like to be. In other parts of Gray County, employers are indicating that employees are finding it difficult to find affordable housing close to their work. Newcomers to Gray County are also indicating that it's difficult to find rental housing. The county is working in partnership with local municipalities on the Community Improvement Plan Program that will provide some incentives for encouraging certain types of development, such as affordable housing. Recolor Gray also has included a number of policies to help encourage more affordable housing. And local municipalities are also updating their local official plans and zoning bylaws to remove any potential policy barriers. Another area that's worth exploring to help encourage more affordable housing is, is development charges. So the premise with development charges is that growth should pay for growth-related costs so that those costs are not required to be paid by existing taxpayers. The Development Charge Act allows municipalities to exempt, exempt certain types of development from development charges. Certain types of development are already exempted under the county's development charge bylaw. For example, secondary units constructed within or attached to an existing dwelling is exempt from a, a county development charge. To encourage more purpose-built rental housing and encourage more secondary units, staff are recommending that council consider making some changes to the current development charge bylaw. By exempting, uh, purpose-built rental housing, for example, from development charges, it allows developers to reduce their overall development cost and may make a rental project more viable. It may allow developers and homeowners to also proceed with rental projects sooner than anticipated. It would also free up capital costs, which we would hope could be invested into maybe more affordable housing projects. By also providing more rental housing, it adds more housing supply. As some may sell their existing house, move into those units. They may be renting in another apartment and may go into some of these newer units. They may look at downsizing and, and move into a rental apartment and, or they look at to free up equity in terms of their existing home and wanting to move into a rental. In, in turn, it frees up then more housing supply throughout the county, which is, is part of the situation that the vacancy rate across the county, both ownership and rental, is quite low. So some of the changes to the development charge bylaw that we're recommending is summarized on the screen. So the first one would be exempting all new purpose-built rental housing units. What we've identified in there is that we could look at setting a maximum rent value on the units that would be exempted. For example, rental units that are less than a hundred and seventy-five percent of the average market rent, setting a cap on, on what those rents would be from exemption. The reason for the hundred and seventy-five percent average market rent, that was a program that was offered by the province in two thousand and seventeen. It was a development charge rebate program, and that was one of the caps they identified for that program. So that's something that we suggested or threw in the report. So if we were to exempt all new purpose-built rental housing units, so if a developer was proposing to construct residential apartments, say above a, a commercial building, convert an old school like the Strathcona example today, or construct a new building for rental apartments, these developments could be potentially then exempted from a county development charge. The second recommendation would be exempting all residential housing developments constructed by nonprofit organizations and/or supported through housing department funding, through, through Anne Marie's Department. So this could include housing built by Habitat for Humanity, for example, the On Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and other nonprofit housing organizations that are trying to build affordable housing in, in our, in our county. There have been some residence developments that have received funding in the past from the county, and county council may recall that we brought forward some grant and lieu for those, 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 for those development charges that would normally apply to those developments. So instead of providing a grant and lieu of development charges, one option would be to exempt these from development charges through updates to the county's development charge bylaw. The, another area that we're recommending is allowing secondary units to also be detached without triggering a county development charge. So as I mentioned, the current county development charge allows secondary units within and attached to an existing development or existing unit. This would allow for a detached unit, so a laneway housing. Or say if a, there's a detached garage and you wanna put a, a secondary unit above your garage in the municipality allows for that to occur, this would then, by exempting it, it wouldn't trigger a charge for that second unit. Another area that we're recommending is, based on our current wording, it only exempts if you have an existing house. So if you're adding a secondary unit within a, say, a basement apartment or an addition to your existing house, then a DC is not applied. But if you're proposing them at the same time, based on the current wording of the bylaw, it would actually trigger two charges. So for example, if you're proposing a new single-detached house and you're wanting a basement apartment at the same time you're applying and building the, the, the house, it would actually trigger two charges based on our current wording. So what we'd be recommending is to clean that up and not trigger that second charge for that second unit. Because in, in reality, they could come in the next day, apply for the secondary unit, and it wouldn't trigger a, a charge.
Right.
The, the next one that I already mentioned is, is creating that development charge deferral policy. So this would set out criteria and requirements, those thresholds for considering, or when we would consider future development charge deferrals. This could include fully accessible housing, like the Ninth Avenue Estates, affordable housing. So it could set out some criterion threshold for when we would consider future deferrals. The next one is considering credits being provided or calculated for redevelopment projects. So for example, if a commercial, an existing commercial building is being converted to residential units, should a credit be provided for that previous commercial use to either reduce or eliminate the requirement for the residential development charge? So that's something that we want to also explore in terms of these edits. The province is considering making some changes to the Development Charges Act in order to encourage more affordable housing. At one point, we heard that, that that's gonna be in the next month or two. We've also heard that it could be later this year. So with that, if council supports the above-noted policy changes, we would begin the necessary process to consider changes to the county development charge bylaw and make any necessary adjustments once we hear what the province is changing in the Development Charges Act. That way, we're not waiting for, for that to happen. We can just adjust as we go. Hempson has indicated that a full-scale development charge background study update would not be required and that county staff can prepare a report to act as an update to the background study. A revised bylaw would also need to be prepared and posted on the website, county website, for sixty days prior to holding the public meeting. And then following the public meeting, we would then summarize any comments received and prepare a, a updated development charge bylaw for council's consideration. So that's what we're recommending in the second part of the report is, is to proceed with the process for looking at updates to the development charge bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess, in clarity, Randy, so allowing people to build a single detached unit and a secondary unit at the same time without triggering two developments? I've got a number of questions on this. So you're telling me, if I'm building, if you're always building a house, and besides, you're telling me to do apartments, something to do with the charge?
Yeah. So right now, the, the wording of the county development charge bylaw is that secondary units are only exempted if the, if the dwelling that they're, putting the secondary unit in exists today. So if, based on that wording, if you're proposing a, a single detached dwelling and a basement apartment at the same time, it actually triggers two charges because that second, the single detached dwelling doesn't exist. So it would be re...
Neither does the main house, do you?
That's what I mean. So the, the main house doesn't exist. So that's, that's why the current wording of our bylaw is only exempts if you have an existing house and you wanna put a basement apartment, not at the same time you're building your, your house and putting in a basement apartment. Yeah.
That makes sense. Okay, rethought. The other thing is, is, is we're triggering now an existing house. If you're as an existing house and that is attached, that's triggered.
Correct.
Currently, right now, you're saying if it's a current house and there's a garage and it's putting on a block of law in the ground, or the basically, we're sort of going to play with it as current.
If it's attached to the existing house.
So now the big one is, is the rethought in, is the, is the, is the attach one. So are you saying, when we go through this, we will?
Sorry, Dwight, I didn't know you couldn't hear me.
I could hear you, but the video recording, I don't think...
You're right. No, I've watched that before. I know when I don't wanna be recorded, I just don't talk into this thing. So, so, but right now, we're moving forward, so that detached, that isn't your plans here? That, that, a new detached will be exempt?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the changes we're recommending, is that secondary units that are detached would also be exempt, if it's on the same property.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, I think we all probably agree that, from interpretation, it's the wording, but I think we all probably at the time felt that that's what the intent was. And I know from our local development charge too. So if we go, you go through this, then how do, do we as our local tier, local municipality have to do the same thing as opening it back up again and?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It, it'd be up to each local municipality to do that. Not every local municipality has a development charge. But if it's something that we wanna do as a collective in terms of trying to, again, encourage more purpose-built rental housing, more secondary units, then if your current bylaw doesn't already exempt, then it, it's something that you can at least explore with your local municipality.
On that, can, can we not just pass a motion saying, "This is the intent"? But if it doesn't have the wording, if it's lack of wording, can we not pass a motion that said, "This was the intent"? That doesn't work.
No, unfortunately not. Just because it's, it's a bylaw passed by council and, and so that's where, in order to truly exempt based on, you know, what we're recommending here that be exempted, we need to change the bylaw. And so there's a process for that, and we're recommending that, let's start that process, revise, make some of the revisions to the development charge bylaws outlined here in the report, and then bring that back to council to hopefully get passed.
Well, that's common, Mr. Warden. I was talking to our local planner and, but how do you deal with it now? Because time, it's gonna take a bit of time to do this, and we're getting into the building season. And I asked a question, I think my phone's falling apart here. I asked a question, is what connects an external secondary dwelling to the primary dwelling? And I said, "Does a deck count"? And he thought it did. So basically, if you had a walkway that had maybe two two-by-sixes with timbers across it connecting from one to the other, that may qualify it as connected. I know you've heard, you've heard the thing about two two-by-fours strapped together across and, and connecting, which sounds sort of silly, but I guess that connects it. But I mean, that could be a solution in the short term that, if you were moving it that, I mean, you have to get to somehow through a walkway anyway. And, and if a, a raised or a little bit of a deck, deck bill, building to one to the other, may be a solution in the short term. And I think, I just wanted to share that, if that would, because you gotta have a walkway through it anyway, right?
Through you, Mr. Warden. What, what we would, what we've deferred is, is basically, whatever attached is would be in accordance with the Interior Billing Code. So it'd be up to your, your chief billing official to determine what is attached as per the billing code.
If this went through, then could you remove that? And then you're still qualified, then you wouldn't be caught? That's just a question to the building.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, in terms of different, different scenarios, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I know to Mr. McQueen's question about intent, when Counselor Desai got his speeding ticket, I know it wasn't his intent to break the law, but the law said...
That definitely was.
Yeah. No, my question, thanks, Randy, for your presentation. My question was, of course, with residential, or with development charges, when they do the study, they determine what the growth's gonna be and the rate and what the impacts financially are gonna be on the community, and then they apportion it over the different types of development. If we exempt certain development, the expense from that will be spread out over the remaining development, correct? So perhaps, and then there's an analogy here to what we were discussing this morning. Perhaps we don't wanna go right back to zero, maybe we wanna go partway to still provide an incentive, but yet not charge the full cost. Maybe we can't do that, I don't know. Desai probably knows.
I know everything.
No. So I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, is that how that work, in a very, you know, a high-level sense, is that how development charges work? I mean, I, I think it is. So maybe there's an opportunity there, rather than going to zero.
Randy?
Yeah, great question. And, and what we would do is part of our kind of next report with the draft development charge bylaws would be to identify any of those financial aspects in terms of, you know, what does this mean if, you know, for example, the first one, we were trying to determine how many purpose-built rental housing has been built in the last few years. We don't have great data for that, unfortunately. So we've, we've put out the request to local municipal planners just to try to remember, you know, how many purpose-built rental housing have been built. I can just by memory count less than a handful of buildings that are built in the last few years that are purpose-built rental housing. So with that, again, it's, it's more in terms of trying to provide some incentives through the CIP program, trying to encourage them through, through, maybe looking at exempting them through development charges in order to encourage more of them to occur. But really, the more recent ones is the, the Bay Shore, the one that's near the, the Bay Shore Arena that's being proposed. I think there's thirty-some units there that are for rental. Berry's Construction, the Strathcona apartment one, as well as the one redevelopment that was done in Chatsworth, was the old school into apartments as well. Those are the three that I can remember in the last few years anyways for purpose-built rental. There may be others. So we're gonna try and quantify that a little bit more and bring back some further information in terms of, what are we talking about in terms of financials? My, our understanding, though, is that those, it wouldn't affect the, the charges that we have currently in the bylaw. So we would still collect the, those charges for every single detached dwelling, for every apartment, for, for all those units, it would still remain the same. What it would mean, though, is that we would be collecting less development charge revenue if we were to exempt further uses than what's currently exempted today. So we're gonna try and quantify that as best we can to give that information to council. When we bring that report back.
Ciro has a comment?
This is probably more relevant to a conversation that you'd have at your local councils, but one of the things I have seen in the past is the, when there are barriers, if you will, high costs or a lot of regulation, people will try to find a way around them. And how that translated in the, in the rental market was that people ended up creating units, which weren't, didn't have permits, hadn't been inspected by your fire folks, and you end up with kind of a, a black market in rentals once the, that threshold of what people can get for rent reaches a particular point. And so that's just another concern, is where we can make these things come out and, and conform appropriately to all the rules, I think it's better for everybody.
Your Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So we, we're, we're talking about a deferral policy here. My question for each of staff is, instead of creating a deferral policy, what if, should we not amend our bylaws to say... we not amend our bylaws to say, our, our Development Charge Bylaw to say that, instead of collecting the development charge at the issuance of the building permit, we will collect it at the start of occupancy, or whenever the building is completed? So then, that way, everyone gets the same deal that a big developer is getting, for example.
Randy?
Great question. It's something that we can explore, for sure.
Can I comment, Randy?
Yeah, absolutely.
The one issue is that you're entering into an agreement and registering on title every one of these, so that becomes a lot of work for staff, and, and some of the developers wouldn't even want to get into that, and timing, right? So I, I would say, it'd be better to create a policy that, that allows that, and then we can work our way at that, than, than every one having to go through that process.
I think, though, Counselor Desai is indicating, though, like, if we change the, the timing of, the default timing of when we collect a development charge from building permit to occupancy permit, then we don't need the deferral agreement. Whether or not that's something that we would consider for certain types of development, I don't know.
What I'm saying is the assurances, that, that builder can't go ahead without a building permit, until he pays his development charges. Once he gets a building permit and starts building, collecting that, then what trigger do you have? And that's where you're going to have to get into these agreements and registering on title and all that. So that's why, that's why, you just can't just defer, say, pay a time to occupancy, because you want to get that money somehow, or have the assurance to get that money, right?
Yeah.
Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Ward, and Hicks. I just wanted to comment, I would be in favor of going to zero on development charges for rental units only, because it may be our only opportunity as a council to contribute to attainable or affordable housing. And if you use the Strathcona school example, the developer takes almost $300,000 that are there in development charges, that's an incentive to go to Hanover and build another unit, where he's going to get another $300,000. So he's got $600,000 risk that's been taken off his shoulders by us, and it all contributes to attainable and affordable housing. So I, I would certainly be in favor of going to zero, just with, with rental units, at least until we get this vacancy rate back up to the three to four percent where it should be. And just in response to Dr. Desai's, I mean, Council-
We, we have deferred in the past. We haven't been asked on this one, and we'll defer in the future, but that will be a council or council decision. And on the residential side, we already have a development charge holiday now.
Resist. Counselor Bart Nicky.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. We all want to incentivize affordable and attainable housing. One of the things that Haseman mentioned, I don't think, I may have missed it, is the idea of asking developers of this type of housing to contribute at least a percentage of units that are truly attainable, that have a cap for rents, or a cap for the increase on rents over time, that is part of the deal. The first party of the recommendation that talks about the nineteen life lease apartments, that, that, as you said, may not be affordable, may not be attainable. And they are meant to be accessible, but I believe the majority of people who may need accessible rental would likely not be able to afford these rates. So these are, you know, not built necessarily to accommodate the people that we intend for them to accommodate. I, I think that if that were part of this deal somehow, that out of those nineteen units, you provide X percentage of them with a cap, that that might go further to, you know, our responsibility. I don't want to take away incentives for building this, but neither do I want to, you know, give, give a handout where we're not hitting the right market. The other thing, Randy, that I'm thinking about is, whatever we do at the county level is, has an economic impact upon all our municipalities with this respect. And so that report that comes back needs to either share that with us, that, that recommendation, or work with the, the planning department people in the municipalities to come up with a policy template that we could take back and, and use in our own municipalities. Thank you.
All right. Oh, I see other, excellent, my goodness, I thought I was getting on with the vote. Counselor Sowever.
Yes, I'm all for deferral in, in, in certain circumstances, and, that are appropriate, and, and, you know, even exemption, but I think when we talk about exemption, we, we have to look at the real cost. So when you're adding secondary suites on the same property, obviously, you don't need any more road, you don't need any more sewer line, but you will need extra capacity in your sewage treatment plant. So I think we have to be careful in, you know, we can go a certain way, but we shouldn't transfer that out of development charges. So when we have to build infrastructure and we don't have development charges, how do we do that? Then we add it to taxation, and then we make all homes unattainable in our entire community.
Randy?
That's a very great point, and that's where I don't, you know, at the end of the day, this may work for county development charges, because the majority of our development charges is roads-related. So I think ninety-one percent, ninety-two percent is, is roads-related. So as, as Counselor Sowever indicated, it's, you know, for a second unit, we're not adding any more roads, per se. There's going to be potentially one more vehicle, potentially, on the, on the roads, but that impact is quite minimal. But on the, for, for sewage and water treatment, which is collected at the local municipal level, they still may want to collect a development charge for those, because there is a bit more of an impact there, for, for any new connections to those, to the water and sewage treatment plants. So, so that's something that we're, that, you know, we're recommending here at the county level, but there may be different exemptions that you want to apply, or different criteria you want to apply at the local municipal level, depending on the circumstances.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Ward, and through you, certainly develops, development supports development, and development also increases our opportunity for sustainability. But I'm wondering if you could just provide or give more information in terms of how development charges at the county are utilized? And what would be the impact, the financial impact, if development charges are not collected? Or what would be the, perhaps, the loss to those development charges categories?
Yeah, and I don't have those specific numbers, but what we plan on doing is trying to quantify that a little bit more in, in our next report. Should council support these in principle, we'll bring back some further financial information as part of that Development Charges Staff Report, that we're calling it. It'll hopefully get into some more financials. But as I mentioned, it's, there's not a lot of great data in terms of trying to figure out how many rentals were, were built in the last even ten years, for example. So we're going to try and quantify that the best we can, to gi- give you information in terms of, if we were to make these changes, here's what we're talking about in terms of financial impacts. So, so that you guys have that information before making a decision.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, oh, sorry, Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, and just one last question, if I may. Randy, and thanks very much for your report. And this is probably an anomaly, but I did have a discussion with, with a developer in Meaford, and he wanted to know, and I thought this might be something you might consider as you're doing your report, if, if there could be an opportunity to do all of the permitting upfront, say, for example, it's a fifty-lot subdivision, and it's going to be billed out over five years or ten years, you know, he wanted to pay everything upfront to avoid those annual increases, and whether there's an opportunity to consider that as you're doing your, your study and your report. Thank you.
Great question. There, there is the ability for, for developers, so it's a, it's a, it's a different agreement, but you're basically upfronting those costs. So there is, under Development Charges Act, developers can enter into an agreement with the municipality to upfront those costs, or to pay those in advance of when they normally would be collected. Most of the requests that we receive are after, normally, but, but there is provisions that would allow earlier, too. And there would be an agreement in place spelling that out. So that's an option, and that's something we can explore further in this report as well.
All right, I'm looking to move things along. We've had a good discussion. We've got a motion before us in two parts, one dealing with the deferral agreement, and the other dealing with a report. That's to be prepared. So I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? I see none, that's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to suggest that we take a short break, and then we'll be coming back and going into closed session. Yep? Somebody perks up? All right, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to bring us into a closed session, to deal with litigation or potential litigation. Counselor Boddy, and seconded by Counselor Milne. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Back in open session, and we're at where, item eight? B, right? Yes. Eight B, that's dealing with the pavement marking. I'll need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Sowever. And we're looking for Graham.
Was this the pavement marking?
Yes, yes, yes. Eight B.
Hopefully, there's not a huge discussion about this one, but just, just, it says so in the report. So we, we do our pavement marking with two tenders. There's one that's symbols, which we used to call hand painting. So that's your, your arrows and your stop blocks. And then the other one, that this one is for the, the award of, is your solid yellow lines, solid white lines, dash lines. So this is, award is rec, is for two years, with the options for maybe three. And I guess one question I'll ask before someone asks it is, why aren't they in the same tender? So we used to do hand painting ourselves, and it's just kind of one of those things that's come out. We started tendering it. Our contractors would work at night, our guys wouldn't work at night for the regular rate, you know, that kind of thing, so that's why we tender that work now. But at some point down the road, by 2020, the way the contracts work, we could probably go to one tender, but we still have to have the discussion that it's not necessarily the same people bidding on it. Like, there is some of the same, but there's other guys that only bid on the lines, and there's other guys that only bid on the hand painting. So we'll have to do some internal discussion that, you know, if, if you did put it under one tender, you don't want the hand painting guy, you know, giving his price as a sub, and then he, of course, the prime contractor's upping it by ten percent, so you're actually worse off, right? So that's just a sidetrack to this, to get your, off, off the focus, but really, it's just about awarding this tender. So our budget was for, basically, three hundred thousand is what we paid for the line marking. This, this one's a little higher, it's three hundred and forty thousand. But of course, we're, you know, we're recommending approval from any surplus we have, because we're going to have to paint our lines. So that's obviously mandatory on our maintenance responsibilities. So we're recommending award.
Counselor Milne?
I'm moved, support.
Oh, it's already been moved and seconded, yes?
Can I vote for it?
Any other questions? Called a question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried, thank you. I think we can move on to D, can we not?
Yeah, Lacey's here.
Oh, sorry, see, oh. Let me see.
Yeah, I'll just do a little intro, I don't know if you all-
So hold on, I want to put it on the floor, if you don't mind. So I need a mover to put this item on the floor, dealing with the road widening. Kind of road forty. Moved by Counselor Keveney, seconded by, I saw some hands, Counselor Milne.
So I just want to introduce Lacey. I don't know if you've, have you talked to these people before? So Lacey, although she doesn't work in transportation, we kind of wish she did, so we give her as much work as we can. But she's doing all our land acquisitions for us, and we've really come a long way with our land acquisitions since she started. She finds out all the little nuances that we didn't know were there, and works very well with our technical staff, Jim Stevenson, who kind of talks to property owners a lot, can really read a legal plan. So Lacey's going to speak to this report, as she's been dealing with the acquisition of this land.
Transportation Services is seeking approval for purchasing a quarter-acre parcel of road widening along Gray Road Forty, which will result in the hundred-foot road widening allowance in this area, which also supports the Gray County long-term goal set out in the Transportation Master Plan. The timing of this acquisition relates to a capacity reinforcement project that Union Gas is completing during the 2019 construction season. Union Gas has submitted a request for municipal consent for the project, which proposed to run gas lines along the south side of Gray Road Forty. Under the terms of the 2008 model franchise agreement between the county and Union Gas, the county must allow Union Gas to enter onto all highways under the jurisdiction of the county for the purpose of installation and maintenance of lines for the transmission of gas in and through the county. The south side of Gray Road Forty already contains Bell and Hydro lines, so Union Gas was asked to install these lines along the north side of Gray Road Forty, which they have agreed to do. We later determined that Gray County does not own all of the road widening in this area. Negotiations with the property owner have been initiated following Gray County's land acquisition procedure, which authorized compensation in the amount of $1,275 for the land, plus fifteen dollars, fifteen hundred dollars tree compensation. The property owner did not accept this offer, and requested that the land be appraised. A quote for an appraisal was obtained, which estimated the cost at $2,500. An appraisal of the land could take between four to six weeks to be completed. In order to expedite the acquisition, additional compensation of $2,500 was presented to the landowner in lieu of an appraisal pending council approval. The landowner has agreed to the additional compensation pending your approval today. The total estimated cost to acquire this parcel is $6,275, which includes compensation for the land, the tree compensation, the additional compensation in lieu of the appraisal, as well as legal costs to complete the transfer. Not acquiring this parcel would cause the gas line to be diverted around this parcel of land, which may result in a bigger financial burden to the county in the future if road widening requires us to relocate the lines. So we are recommending that the county enter into an agreement with the landowner to acquire the land for $5,275, which is $2,500 over the guidelines set out in Gray County's land acquisition procedure. And that staff be directed to proceed with the acquisition prior to county council approval to expedite this transfer.
Very good. Questions, council? Counselor McQueen?
Just as, nothing, I, the report that's going forward, but just as a side, I know that procedure was probably developed 2011 on property values, and I think it maybe needs to be reviewed. And, and, and I think that's a reflection of your report, showing that you had to up it from that. So, not to get into that discussion, but I think that needs to something that-
I'm hearing that's in the process. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. So my first question was with regards to updating the values. My follow-up question on that is, do we, do we know the timeline on when the policy will be updated? And another question I have is around expropriation of the, of the land. Was that an option, and was that a cheaper option?
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to guess no, but, but go ahead, Mr. Ward.
So we are working on updating the policy. We're hoping to have a report to council in the near future, hopefully within, within the three-month range. As far as new expropriating the land, for this instance, it likely wasn't an option. I think it takes around a year for that process to be completed, and so we didn't get the municipal consent request until November of last year, so the timing just didn't work out. And it always is a preferred option to negotiate with the landowners as much as we can.
Counselor Campbell?
Knowing this property, it's on the corner of Side Road Two-
And it always is a preferred option to negotiate with the landowners as much as we can.
Counselor Gamble?
Knowing this property, it's on the corner of Side Road 2. Why is that the only property that's entered into this agreement? Like, that chunk from four, Side Road four, two-two, they've got to come down that side. Why is that the only property involved?
So the property was all surveyed in that area in 2007, actually. And so much of that was acquired at that time, but for whatever reason, this parcel was not acquired.
Fair enough. Counselor Milne?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to comment that I'm entirely thankful that it's Lacey doing this and not Counselor Desai, because if his first instinct is to go for the jugular and expropriate...
Those darn lands, yes.
I know where it would be. So thank you for your work.
All right. It sounds like we're ready to call the question. So on the motion to receive this report, to waive the procedure, and to make the final offer, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, and congratulations. There's your first.
First question, Mr. Warden?
Just following up on that procedure being reviewed, I know the big problem, when it was on the TAPS committee when we're doing that, is throughout the county, values change. For example, Blue Mountains' values might be different than other areas and vice versa. So I would strongly suggest that you look at that, and that's something that we struggled with back when we were doing it. I think we had two different values. One, I think we had Blue Mountain value, and then we had the rest. But I know that things are really changing. We saw this morning with regards to agricultural lands, how that's greatly gone up 71 percent. It just, I don't think it's going to be an easy task, but I think you've got to give it some thought of how you develop that. That's all.
Yeah, just to speak to that, we currently do have a price for Blue Mountains and a price for everybody else.
(laughter)
We even noticed that. But even that is really kind of a narrow vision, I think, because, you know, some land widening is on a 10-acre parcel, some land widening is swamp, some is just a ditch, some is... So it seems like our neighbors, most of their land acquisition policies deal with appraisals, rather than just having a blanket price for even an area or whatever. So I think that's probably the way we'll end up going somehow when we get down this road.
Okay. Counselor Desai.
My question with regards to the policy itself is, does it include room and therefore staff to be able to negotiate instead of having, I'm getting a yes, perfect.
Yeah, I'm certain that the policy will take note of what you've just said when it comes back. I'm trying to move us along.
Lunch is here.
Lunch is here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was hoping we could squeeze another one in.
Absolutely.
And...
I agree.
Why don't we do that? Let's squeeze item D in. Yes, Adopt a Road Program. If I could get a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Bart Nicky. And you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Warden and counselors. Today, I'm bringing this report to recommend that the updated procedure and the permit be approved. The second part of the recommendation is that the Director of Transportation Services be delegated to sign for this as a permit rather than an agreement, and that's the way it was administered previously. Just as an overview of what we have done to date, we, earlier last year, we updated our school litter pickup program. And so as we were developing this and updating it, we use some of our road safety schedules in here, as well as the procedure for critical injuries. So we're taking into account the county's liability in those aspects. We've also addressed the user, end user, in the sense that the form is more user-friendly. The insurance requirements, as addressed in 7-1 and 7-2 of the procedure, have now changed so that it's more accessible to families and groups. And the insurance for those participants will be covered through the county's insurance. That will be under the volunteer portion of our insurance coverage. So we work closely with our insurance provider. The clerk's office was a big help in reviewing and revising this procedure. And I think we've got a good procedure now. It'll be for five-year terms. The litter pickup time period will be between May 1st and October 10th. And I think the rest of the information is in the report. If there's any questions, I can speak to those.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you through you, Warden. I'm very pleased to see this. Thank you very much. I'm wondering if this report could be circulated to the lower tiers.
I'm sure it could be, yes.
Thank you, Warden.
Other questions? People are hungry.
(inaudible).
Okay, so I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. And yes, it will be circulated.
Thank you, Warden.
Okay, I think we're going to break for lunch. Okay, we are now on 8E, dealing with accountability and transparency. Okay, I need a motion to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Clumpus, seconded by Counselor...who do I want to choose? I'll go with Counselor Burley.
Good afternoon. The first report is Accountability and Transparency Policy. The Municipal Act requires that every municipality have an Accountability and Transparency policy. Gray County's Accountability and Transparency policy was completed in 2008 as a result of changes made to the Municipal Act, and it was in need of an update. Review of other policies from municipalities was completed by staff. Changes to the provincial legislation and the implementation of several Gray County policies, including the Purchasing Policy, Code of Conduct, and Council Staff Relations policy, are now included within the Accountability and Transparency policy. The policy sets out accountability and transparency requirements for items such as financial matters, internal governance, public participation, and open meetings, and conveys that Gray County strives to make our operations as open and transparent to the public as possible. If approved by council today, a bylaw will be brought forward to the next meeting for consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Very good. Any questions? Counselor Bart Nicky?
Through you, Mr. Warden. In front of you, you have a copy of the IAPA 2 Public Participation Spectrum. I was researching this about a week and a half before I got these two policies, actually. I think this applies to both of them, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of staff and council as something we might look towards achieving in future updating of our strategic plans and directions. This is an internationally accredited system, and I think if you really read all the different little boxes, we can tick off the majority of them already, and I'm sure most municipalities in the room can. But it's a way of saying to the public, we are meeting an international standard, and many municipalities have adopted this in their policies. I'm not sure about counties. I haven't found one yet. But I think it speaks to best practice, and I'm just going to leave it for future consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? I call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. We're on max with F. That's still you, Heather, but if I could have a motion. Why don't I go with, I'm just going to pick. They had their hands up. Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Gamble. That's to make up for the last time.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this is actually a brand-new policy, and it was a commitment that came out of last council regarding an effort to sort of combine and make a one-document policy that helps align communications between staff and council. So communication between staff and council is essential, and it comes in many, many forms, as you all well know. This policy provides clarification on the working relationship between council and staff regarding how and when communications are received or sent, as well as the various types of communications that can be used by council members. Gray County continues to provide openness and transparency in what we do. This policy will serve as a go-to document for council members on how they can expect to receive information, how they can request further information, and what tools are available to provide information to the many different stakeholders, groups that we deal with on a regular basis. The protocol speaks to how decisions are made, where advice can be obtained for council-related matters, the presentation of professional opinions by staff, and ensuring that we make council aware of the items that could impact their decision-making. The protocol speaks to MFPa and PFPa, which the county both fall under both pieces of legislation, and how requests for information subject to these can be made through the Clerk's Department. The protocol outlines Gray County's commitment to open agendas, meetings, and resolution wherever possible, while identifying that there are times when a closed meeting is required. It identifies how delegations are handled, and that the presentations are posted to the county website following the meeting to ensure the public has that information. The protocol provides guidance on intergovernmental relations, along with highlights related to purchasing practices and active development files. It also speaks to the county eBlast and the county connection tools that are used to provide additional information that may not necessarily be required on an agenda, but is good information for counselors to be aware of. This protocol will be the go-to document for council members to understand the various communication practices used and how to access additional information, and it will become part of the new council orientation process with the next term of council. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Counselor Soever?
Just one item. Under reporting relationships, it talks about requests for information from a council member that are not received or answered at a council or committee meeting will be circulated in writing to all council members. It doesn't seem to give much leeway, and I'm just concerned, I know some people, without looking at anybody here, ask a lot of questions, and this is great, but I already get about 1,000 emails a week, so I wouldn't want to receive, you know, every time somebody asks a question like, you know, when was that stop sign put there? I don't want to receive an email on that. Now, I'm sure that's not what the intent is here, but the wording, it says that it just replies to everything, and so, you know, I really don't want to get emails on every little request that's asked of staff for information. There's 18 counselors here, and that could be a lot of emails.
So through you, Mr. Warden, that is, for things that are asked on the floor of council here during a committee report, and staff don't have the answer to that right away, we want to ensure that because the question was asked on the floor of council, that you will, every council will, counselor will receive that information so that they understand the answer to the question that was asked on the floor. If we have an individual question from a particular council member outside of council meetings, we'll respond to that counselor individually. But these are just required for council members.
And I would just add, I think there's some discretion there. Where you're asked a specific question, where the staff members asked a specific question, and the answer's 27 or next Tuesday, you know, we'll share that information. But when it becomes a broader discussion where there's some interpretation of policy or whatever, and we think that it would be of benefit for folks to have that interpretation, I would like to still be able to share those, but I think we can all use our discretion.
Okay, well, as long as there is room for that discretion, because it does say here that are not received and answered at a council meeting. So if, so that would imply that, you know, requests are, so I just don't want to be a breach of that.
Counselor Bart Nicky?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Not to ask too many questions, I did want to say that I think that we could add a couple of words to that, just to clarify the intent. And up under Principles, the last paragraph there, it says, in the middle line, "Counselors may be perceived as a conflict of interest." I know some counselors may be perceived as a conflict of interest...
I'm missing a word there.
But not all.
Yes.
The other point, because this is going to be policy, is that under expectations of information flow outside of business hours, I'm always of the belief that we use positive language when we can. So it could be, unless there is an emergency, it is expected that council requests for information will be addressed only within regular business hours instead of the negative.
Sure. I thought you were math teacher.
Pardon me?
I'm just being cute. Not very cute. All right, resist.
Some language.
Any other questions? Good. Then I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Next, item 8G, dealing with the short-term loans. And now, Anne Marie. Yes, moved by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor, we'll go with Hutchinson. Anne Marie?
Thank you. A few weeks ago, I came to council with a request for a short-term loan for Owensound Housing Company. The nonprofit was, is constructing eight units, and instead of having the cost and, I guess, time of going through a financing to get a construction loan, we were able to offer them a short-term loan through the county. I was asked by Counselor Desai, actually, to come back with a policy on this. So I have done that, recognizing that it is only for nonprofits. And my reason being is that we have a history in Gray County with successful partnerships with not-for-profits when it comes to building affordable housing. The majority of affordable housing we have built over the years has been with nonprofits. This group also has a lot of potential for future builds, and they also have experience in working with people, vulnerable populations, maybe seniors, people with disabilities, in recognizing that there is sometimes a little bit of extra help that is needed in order to have a successful tenancy to maintain. So that is sort of why I did narrow it down to nonprofits at this time. So we are looking at, for eligibility for this program, they would be working with Gray County through an affordable housing program to build affordable housing. It would be a maximum of $500,000 for the loan, a maximum of one year, and we would use the interest rate based on the infrastructure Ontario interest rate at the time. That's sort of where my, what I'm proposing. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't see any questions. Counselor Desai?
Okay, Mr. Warden. My question with regards to this one is, will there be an intake period where corporations would be able to apply for this loan? Or is it an as-it-go's basis where when they realize that there is a need for funding that they're unable to fulfill, they can come to the county and ask for the bridge funding?
Second way is the way I read it, but Anne Marie?
Sorry, pardon me?
I said the second way is the way I read it, but...
So what we normally do is when we do find out funds from the province, if they're going ahead with another build program, we do go out for an expression of interest for the funds, and at that time, you know, we enter into an agreement with them. And normally, what happens when they apply is we do get an idea of how they're going to finance at that time. And so if they are a not-for-profit that is in need of that, then they can certainly apply during that process. Most of our, for instance, this was for eight builds, and most of our private developers probably wouldn't even need a loan to get them through that construction time.
My other question with this is, how will this work with, in a system with our private developers? And I'm referring back to the report from item 8A, where we saw that we've got about a 1% to 2% vacancy rate, and we're aiming for a 3% to 4%. Are we putting ourselves with this in a situation where we might exceed that 3% to 4% vacancy rate? Because I wouldn't like to see us go too far beyond that either.
Anne Marie?
We have a waitlist in Gray County of 600 people waiting for affordable housing. I don't see us in the next 10 years being able to build 600 units with the money that we receive from the province and the federal government. So I don't... we receive from the province and the federal government, so I don't see that as happening. I would... I think that if we got to a point where our vacancy rate was healthy again, and we were finding that we didn't need to provide this anymore, we could certainly come back and just... And say, you know, here's where we're at right now, and this isn't... Most of the nonprofit builds are those small builds, right? So, I think that this is just a way to increase that, and every little bit helps. On the attainable end of it, we're not really assisting with the attainable housing part, because again, a lot of that is done by a private developer that has the ability to fund that.
Okay. I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Ann Marie. Item number 8H.
Steve.
Steve, yes. Come on up. Dealing with the regional skills training. If I can get a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Bart Nicky, seconded by Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you.
Steve?
So, just an update on our Regional Skills Training Center and Innovation Center. It's been making good progress, and I believe it remains a key part of our economic development strategy. We keep hearing from businesses that they need skilled labor, and the labor pool is tight, and on the other hand, we continue to hear from potential employees and residents who need to be retrained but can't get that training locally. So fundamentally, that is what we're trying to do with this acquisition and this building and the vision. I'm very optimistic, after touring a few facilities, and I would encourage you in the report I mentioned, Innovation Ottawa, if you ever get a chance or in Ottawa for other reasons, try and pop over and see that facility. It's fun... While it's a little larger and had more money, I believe where the intent is the same. So, we continue to see interest from businesses in the Training Center. To that end, we're having on April 18th, Bruce Power Suppliers attend the college to have a tour and understand what we're trying to do, and apparently, that's getting filled up. We can continue to see and get excited about Georgian College's approval for their applications for apprenticeship training, very, very important for the trades and to service what's happening in Bruce Power. The Small Business Generator, which is a group, a nonprofit group of private sector business leaders, has formed. They're moving forward, and there's representation from across Gray County, and I'm quite excited about that. In fact, they've... I believe, Kevin, it's up to $50,000 in private sector donations they've donated, so... And we have an RFP moving forward on the child services. We have applied for funding from Fed Dev, and we had a meeting at a roundtable last Friday, and that was great to attend that, and I had a side meeting with our representative. And of course, there's lots of pressure on the Fed Dev people, but I'm confident that they liked our application, and I've already extended invitation, and they've already accepted to come on up for a tour of Gray. So, I look forward to that. There are challenges, of course, and the business environment keeps changing, so I think it's time that we update the business plan and particularly utilize the expertise of Dr. James Noonan, who's had a lot of experience with Georgian College and their Innovation Center, and setting up Innovation Guelph, which is the group that our Generator group is going to align themselves with. So, his experience and knowledge and expertise, particularly in where to find funding and how to structure arrangements, was pretty apparent when we talked to him. So, that's our recommendation, and I look forward to working with everybody on this project.
Questions? Counsel Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Steve, for your presentation. If everything proceeds as we may anticipate it to proceed, when would we expect some graduates from this program?
Well, I think it's going to be a number of different elements. Of course, the Small Business Enterprise Center and the Generator, I think, are already starting to mentor people. The trades programs will take a little... A few years to ramp up. That's the way they're structured through the college. And then the RFP for the child services will be when it can be delivered. But we're looking at the fabrication lab will be when we get... Likely when we get funding and can get the equipment, and we can start delivering programs that meet the needs of the interest, which is to be similar to what happens at Launchpad, in my mind.
Counsel Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question is, with regards to the province and through the Ministry of Training Colleges and Universities, and I would like to connect this to item 7C, and my question around that is, will that ministry provide funding or assistance in securing the Fed Dev funding? Or has staff contacted the ministry in order to seek assistance on this issue?
So, MTCU, we have been talking to MTCU, but in other projects, one was around the Tenneco closure. They offer a community and transition program, and the other was in dealing with the approval of the apprenticeship program. I don't believe in those discussions, my sense was that they're not there to help us apply to the federal funding. I am comfortable with where the federal funding is, but we'll be seeking other programs for sure, and many programs you can stack, so you can apply on both. The federal... The Fed Dev program is quite unique because it's multi-year, it's capital, and it's operating, and it's kind of a full-meal deal. But certainly, we're always interested if there's a program or a contact there. I mean, I can reach out to them just to make sure, and I'll do that, but we're always looking at different programs, so...
Go ahead, Cass.
I think part of why we felt it was important to bring Dr. Doran in is, as Steve mentioned, things are changing quickly. Some of you will be more aware to what's happening on the Bruce County side with the Nuclear Innovation Center and some of the work that Fanchow is doing. With Jamie's expertise in talking to the business community and kind of setting up these centers for the longer-term sustainability, I think he can really help us to put together a business case that's going to set us up for, in the, you know, the best possible light to be, so that we're complementing what's happening over there, but, you know, focused on what our requirements are here in Gray County.
I mean, and we just heard word a half an hour ago that the funding for the Enterprise Center has been more or less secured for the next three years, and that's... They're going to be a big part of that, so it's... That's all good news, so...
Counsel Carlton?
Through you, Mr. Warden. You made reference to a tour on April 18th, Steve. Is that just for the nuclear, or is that open to others? I'm thinking as a new counselor and being on Economic Development Committee, I'd like to see this.
Yeah, so that was specifically for... It was originally designed specifically for new Bruce Power suppliers to understand what the college is about, because I didn't get a sense that they understood the breadth and scope and facilities that were over here at Georgian, and not many have been there. And so, we were going to also talk about the Training Center, but I believe we'll be setting up something in the near future that will be open for everybody.
Good. I don't see any other questions, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you, sir. All right. Item number nine. Is there any other business? Counsel McLean?
Comment, a question, I guess. Is there a policy, and I know one time they were looking at a policy with regards to naming county roads. Was there something ever developed there, or was it sort of decided, never got finished or whatever? It might be a term ago.
You didn't call, I don't know, we tend to say way or something? I didn't know.
Do you remember, Kevin?
I remember.
Say no way.
One second, we got Kevin.
I recall Lance Thurston working on this and updating that policy, and we were trying to get away from naming individuals, if I recall right, and...
The answer, we're searching as things go. Maybe what we can do is move on to any other business.
Yeah, no, no, it doesn't matter today. It's just if you come across something, send me a link or whatever.
All right. Counsel Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just in all seriousness, I do remember a conversation when the memorial plaque for Agnes McPhail was put on Gray Road 9 down there, and there was a process to rename that or a thought to rename Gray Road 9 as McPhail Road or something like that. And if I remember correctly, it was decided because there is the 911 system in place with the numbers and all that kind of stuff, that the road would continue to be known officially as Gray Road Number 9, but the road... The signs were put up as Agnes McPhail Highway or Road or whatever it was, and it could be known that anecdotally, but if you start putting names, and when there's been a historical number, in the case of an emergency, someone might get confused and say, "I'm on Agnes McPhail Road," and 911 operators going, "Well, there isn't one. Where are you?" Like, it creates some difficulties that way in respect of renaming roads. New roads, well, then that's, I guess, there's probably a policy for dealing with those, but that's how I recall that conversation taking place.
Hearing that there is a policy, and the clerk will...
Would everyone like a copy of it, or just circulate it to Counsel McQueen?
Circulate everyone.
Everyone?
Especially the mayor of Blue Mountains.
Circulate it out.
Okay. Any other business? Seeing none. Any notices of motion? You have a notice of motion?
No.
A lot of waivers. People want to go for the ultimate. I want to stretch. No, I'm teasing. No, I'll look for the motion, Counsel Millen, seconded by Counsel Burley, I suppose. And all those in favor to adjourn? Thank you very much.